All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, July 19th, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting. So we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And getting started with citizens input, we do have one item from Amy LaBrash. She was not able to be here, so I am going to read it. But before we get started, it looks like we don't have too many people in the audience for Two Washington Street, but I just wanted to let everyone know that it is an informal hearing. We will not be taking a vote. It's really just kind of an FYI for the board. So the public hearing is open. We won't be taking public content, but I think we're all watching the public hearings and attending them in person and taking that in as well. So just wanted to, housekeeping up front, just in case anyone is here for that item, just so as a set expectations. All right. So the first item from Amy is about the J.C.'s car show. Sorry, I'm just bringing it up. Sorry, it feels like it takes forever when everyone's waiting, but it's processing. Okay. All right. My name is Amy LaBrash, and I am the Membership Vice Chair as well as the Car Show Chairperson. I'm sorry that I could not address the board in person, as I have a family obligation that would not allow me to do so. I wanted to take a moment to thank the Board of Selectmen, Police Department, DPW, and the Town Managers Office for all the help and support that was given to us for this new project. As everyone knows, many organizations have suffered financially because of the COVID pandemic. Many of us have had to become more creative and try to find new things to recover from this period of time. The car show's intent was to raise much-needed money to continue the good work we do, but also establish partnerships with downtown businesses. This event was a huge success, not only financially, but it created a new event that was enjoyed by hundreds of people in our town. Some takeaways from this event that really gave our uptown a moment to shine. Founder's Day is a wonderful event, but after the parade, the real stuff happens at the Booth Playground. Founder's Day allows nonprofits to shine and make much-needed money. This event allowed the business owners to make the day theirs, having spies to come out on the street and show off what they provide at their store. Many food establishments were open and some were closed, so this allowed the fire department to cook and make some money towards the restoration of the old fire truck. They also had a 50-50 raffle. They had 32 pre-registered cars, and the final total was 93. T-shirts were sold as well, raising over $3,000. Thanks to the Historical Society, Memorial Hall, and the Steamer Shed was open for all to walk through. It was packed in there. All in all, it was a perfect day. It seemed to flow well traffic-wise. There was minimal issues. So many people came up and thanked us after the event and wanted it to be held again. Many also commented that it felt like stepping back in the time with the cars being there and the road being closed. Since this was our first stab at something like this, there are a few tweaks we'll implement next year. Those we'll discuss with you next year. Again, thank you, everyone, for your support and guidance. I will close with this. Henry Ford once said, "Coming together is the beginning, keeping together is progress, and working together is success." All the best, Amy LaBrash, Foxborough J.C.'s. So I know many, many people got to go. We were kind of sidelined with COVID, but I did drive by, and it seemed, it seemed like the closing of the street worked out well with the diversion that happened, and it just seemed like a great event. I heard nothing but positive feedback on that one.
Absolutely same here. I was working that day, but everyone I know that went and anything I saw on social media all was all positive.
Yeah, really, especially the numbers speak for themselves. Wow, amazing. All right. Anything else, anyone online or in person for citizens input? No? All right. So our first item is 7:05. It's a public hearing for earth removal permit application for 63 Elm Street. So we're at 7:05 on this computer, so I think we're all set to open that public hearing right on time. Dennis, you want to open?
Oh.
I think she printed it out, right?
I did, yes. It should be in your pile.
Is it in front of you, Doc?
No, this is for the next item.
Is it under this page here?
No.
You can, you can open it here at...
Yeah.
It's this one right here.
This one here?
Nope, this one.
Public hearing, Bodich. There you go.
Word's a little slow opening this evening.
I have it here. Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, if you have it up, go ahead.
I have it up. So in conformity with the requirements of Section 21 of Chapter 40 of the Massachusetts General Laws, Tura Ed., Chapter 115 of the town bylaws, you are hereby notified that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, July 19th, 2022, beginning at 7:05 PM in the Gala Meeting Room, 40 South Street, to review the applications submitted by Bodich and Dewey, LLP, on behalf of Massachusetts Electric Company for an earth removal permit for electric substation improvements at 63 Elm Street. All interested parties are welcome to attend. Signed by the Board of Selectmen, Foxborough Mass. Dennis Keefe, Clerk.
All right, wonderful. I understand we have two people here in the audience. Are you guys coming up at all? Are you speaking?
Josh is presenting.
Josh is presenting? Okay. So Josh, I see you and O. Martinez on. Can you guys hear us okay? And do you mind just giving us a quick hello so we can be sure we can hear you?
Yes, sure. So can folks hear me okay?
Do you mind just turning it up a tad, Mr. Beck?
Okay. How is that? Is that better?
I think we're good.
Excellent. And the O. Martinez is Orlando Martinez. He is the project manager who works directly for National Grid. I am outside counsel with Bodich and Dewey, representing the company in connection with this matter. So as a, first of all, we did submit a, via email, we submitted some slide deck, a slide deck presentation. Is there a way that that can be uploaded?
We have a couple attachments here. Hold on one second. We're just, it's, it's called Planning Board Slide Deck 63 Elm PDF.
That's right. And alternatively, we could share our screen, whichever way you prefer.
You can share your screen.
Okay.
Just give us a second to make sure the permissions are all being granted.
It is.
Okay. You're good now.
From our, from our side, Michael Lawler, who's also with National Grid, he's the one that will be sharing the screen.
Okay, I'm getting the thumbs up. We can see it in front of us on our computers, but I can't see it on the screen out here just yet. And I don't think TV can see it at home.
Mike, are you sharing now?
We're not seeing him.
We're not seeing him share yet.
Okay.
It is enabled.
It is enabled. There's a third gentleman, Mr. Beck, that's not on the screen, that's the one that's sharing, I guess. Mike, what'd you say his name is? Mike?
Lawler.
Mike Lawler? Up there. Michael Lawler, there he is. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you. I'm Michael Lawler. I'm a civil structural engineer with the Substation Engineering Group for National Grid.
Wonderful. Are you able to share now?
I am unable to. It looks like I don't have the button here to click for share.
Can you do it from yours? Yours, Christina?
Josh, I do think that's okay not to share, just because the board did receive this last week, and I know this has already been reviewed with the planning board, so.
And we've got it in front of us.
If the board's okay with that, we can forego the slide deck.
We actually have it in front of us, so we're looking at it, although it's not up on the screen, yes.
Okay, sure. Well, I promised to be brief. We only have five minutes allotted. So it's a pretty straightforward project. As Katie had mentioned, we have been before both the ZBA as well as the planning board, and prior to that, we've met with a number of town officials in connection with this project in order to plan this project and work with the town. Both the ZBA and the planning board unanimously approved the project with respect to their respective permits that needed to be granted there. The project essentially entails the rebuilding of an electric substation. This is an existing electric substation that has been in existence for over 65 years, located at 63 Elm Street. This is within the town's limited industrial or LI zoning district. It's not within any overlay districts. It's not within a floodplain, not within any environmentally sensitive areas such as aquifer or watershed or anything like that. The project essentially involves the expansion in the rear portion of the substation in order to accommodate some new equipment that needs to be replaced, that needs to replace old equipment. And as I said, this substation has been in existence for over 65 years. Not all the equipment is that old, but it, but a lot of it is, has gone beyond its useful life. So the types of equipment are typical substation-related equipment, such as transformers and circuit breakers, switches, dead-end structures. There's certain line work that needs to occur. The fencing that's there now is going to be replaced with National Grid standard eight-foot plus one foot of barbed wire chain link fencing and other related substation equipment and facility. In terms of this specific permit that we're seeking tonight, it is an earth removal special permit in accordance with the town's general bylaws. With respect to the removal, we are exceeding the 200 cubic yard threshold, which triggers this requirement. The earth to be removed in terms of cubic yards includes 370, approximately 370 cubic yards to be cut and approximately 105 cubic yards to be filled. Some of the fill includes crushed stone fill, which is pre-existing in the yard today, so similar crushed stone surface filling will be included in order to accommodate this project. There's also some grading work. Again, the project, the majority of the new work with respect to the substation yard is going to occur in the rear portion of the yard, far away from the street. What you may also notice in your packet includes a landscape plan, which is essentially an aerial. It shows all of the beautification elements, which I can, I think I can say confidently, the ZBA and the planning board were both very pleased to see that this site, which does not have any landscaping today, that under this project, the company took the opportunity to add and enhance the site with a number of different plantings, both along the front, along 63 Elm Street, but also along portions of the side yard as well. But if, for folks who know this site, this is within an industrial zone. It is surrounded by industrial-type properties. Across the street is the town's DPW. To the left, which I think is to the west, is a solar photovoltaic system. So this facility has been here for decades, and it's really just, the project is going to be an aesthetic improvement. It'll improve the streetscape, and clearly, the underlying purpose is that it will improve the electrical reliability for the town. It's a fast-track project in terms of the company needing to be able to get the work started. Again, this is for the public good. They need to be able to get moving with this project, which I think begins sometime in the fall with respect to certain aspects of the work. Certain other work has occurred already in connection with the line work, I believe, and the company is very much looking forward to getting this project going. So I'll just leave it there and be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
All right, great. Seems pretty straightforward, and I think everyone's all for the upgrade and reliability improvements. There is a draft approval letter that we have that has 10 recommended conditions. Are you familiar with those, or do you need me to read those out loud real quick? They're the conditions set by the DPW and the pieces that are from the bylaw.
I have not seen this draft, Madam Chair, and I guess, so yes, I would like to hear them, if you wouldn't mind sharing it, but I also want to point out that we did also request certain waivers in our petition letter.
Yep, we see those in there in the letter as well. So I don't think any of these will be a surprise, but new landscape screenings shall be provided to enhance streetscape. No slope shall be left undetended in its final stage, greater than 3 to 1, 33%. Debris, stumps, boulders shall be moved from the site and disposed in an approved location and manner. The stumps can't be used to backfill. Earth material that's removed to the site needs to be transported to an approved facility to avoid the risk of spreading unsuitable or contaminated soils. The permit's valid for one year. The town of DPW does not have the need for the material to be removed. The DPW does not have a location for it to be stored. The material removed is at your expense. Erosion control measures shall be installed prior to the earth removal to prevent runoff onto Elm Street, neighboring properties, and other sensitive areas. The trucking of materials should not interfere with school bus schedules or routes, and the public works and inspections departments must be notified a minimum of 48 hours prior to the start of the earth removal. Okay.
So to the project team, those sound acceptable to me. To Mike Lawler and Orlando, the slope condition as well, is that, and I see you're nodding your head.
I see heads nodding.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So with that, are there any other questions before we move forward with a motion?
Pretty straightforward.
No, and we do have this letter that looks like it will be ready. Katie, anything from you?
Yes.
All set for me. If you guys just want to sign, I can get that over to Josh and his team first thing tomorrow morning.
Yes.
Okay, I think that's Joan. Can you mute Joan?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks. All right, so we're ready. We need to move, move, anyone here, sorry, from the public that's here about this? No?
Joan was here about this.
Oh, Joan is here about this? Okay.
Yes. Joan Gallivan. I have a property at 6971 Elm Street, right on the other side of the railroad tracks. So sort of a budding, this property as well. It has been a very, very large, major project already. It said in a letter that we received from one of the project directors, when we were notified about this about a month and a half ago, that the major part of this work was going to be done in September. We've even had the road blocked off. It's been so... So I guess I'm, I only saw her on the paper.
She's coming in and out.
So Joan, I think we are losing you on and off. The last thing we heard was, so what I would ask is... Your iPad, it looks like it's cutting in and out.
Did I need to move someplace else?
Yeah, it looks like it's your Wi-Fi connection.
So has you to start your video. I don't know what to do.
Well, we can hear you better, we can hear you better now. So the last thing we heard was, your ask is...
All right. There's a big tree that's almost on the road, and I just wondered, is that, that seems to be, the plant right now, or the big facility there, is almost right on the sidewalk, and there's a big, big tree. And have they addressed that at all? Because it just seems to be in the way when they're trying to work, and it's partially almost on the street. Anyway, that was one thing. The second thing is, it looks like they're just going to be replacing to make sure the surface of this back new area has the proper top surface. Is that the idea there of this earth removal? Or is there some other wetland thing or something that's going on? It just sounded like they were going to be taking out the top layer to put in a more, better surface for the new, whatever, materials or things they're putting in there.
I don't know who the owner of that tree is, if it's on the property or if it's on town property. I'm not sure about that, but maybe the team, I'll allow the team on the line. Do you have, can you answer Joan's question about the tree and her question about the back? Although I'm not 100% clear what, okay, I'm getting shaking heads, so I'll let you guys go ahead.
Sure. I'm Orlando Martinez, project manager for this project. One of the things, and I take her comments, you know, very, very, very seriously, is in that tree, we have looked at what we can do to just make that area in general better. That tree, though, happens to be not on our property. So we have trimmed it. We've trimmed it because we do have lines in the area, so that is one thing that we have done, but we, that tree is not on our property, based on the surveys that I have seen. So I don't know if that answers that first question. The second question regarding the reason that we're doing these excavations is that the equipment that we're going to be bringing in requires some foundations, and if you need some more information about that, Mike Lawler is our civil engineer. But we will be removing the earth to be able to set foundations in deep enough to withstand the forces of the equipment that we're going to be bringing in to make that all stable, et cetera. And Mike, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
No, Orlando, you said it pretty well. Basically, it's, we're expanding the rear portion of the existing substation, and what you see now up front will be what it looks like in the rear. It'll be what we call station stone material on top, and then underneath that will be our select fill material underneath that.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Joan?
Thank you.
All right. And maybe if someone, I don't know, Katie or, you know, Christina or Bill, if you can take notes and maybe check with the DPW if that, I don't know whose tree that is, but if it's on town property and needs to be trimmed or something, maybe someone can take a look at it.
We'll do that.
All right. Thanks, Joan. Anyone else before we close the public hearing?
Madam Chair, if I may, just with respect to the letter that was written, we've heard the conditions. I haven't seen the actual letter, but if, if the board is looking to vote favorably with respect to the grant of this special permit, if you could just make sure to include in that vote approval of the waivers that were included in my petition letter, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and let me just, since we're talking about it, then let me just, I'm not going to read all the waivers, but I see one about Section 11, 115-4B. I see one about 115-3B5, 115-4H, 115-4J, and one for 115-4I. Does that sound right to you? Those are the five waivers that I see that you requested.
That sounds right, although the 4I...
115-4I prohibiting trucking operations from occurring within a one-mile radius of an elementary school during the first hour proceeding? Okay.
I think I had indicated, I may have said 4J, but it might be 4I.
Okay. They are spelled out in the letter, though, the whole piece.
Right.
Yes. Okay, so I think we're all set for a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, and then the motion to approve the application including waivers.
Motion to approve the Bodich and Dewey application for an earth removal permit to be exercised at 63 Elm Street under the conditions set forth by the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, I think the conditions set forth include the waivers, since they're in the letter, and I think that we're covered there, so.
Okay, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great. Thank you. Thanks for dealing with us during the technical difficulty as well. I appreciate it.
Thank you, and thanks to everyone in the town, and Katie, and all members. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. All right, so moving on to a nice, happy item. We have an award of excellence presentation for Foxborough Cable Access, and I'm going to actually hand this one over to Doc, because this, this started under his tenure, so he is going to go ahead and present it. If you gentlemen don't mind coming up to the table. Can't hide behind the camera always.
Oh, that was good, Leah. Nailed it. Had you been practicing that?
No.
I like being on this side of it.
Well, I want to thank Chairwoman Leah for allowing me to present this award to you guys. It's, was truly a remarkable thing that you guys did during the COVID pandemic. You know, we certainly wanted to acknowledge what you did was above and beyond what anybody could have asked for, you know, for, with you guys, just keeping us all informed and being there. When the pandemic hit, you know, you had the ability to just pivot, seemed like to me. I know with you guys, looking back, it was probably weeks of running around 24/7, but to us, it seemed like you just pivoted on a dime to hold, for us to be able to hold remote meetings, remote access, the learning, the schools, how to get business done while keeping our employees and our residents safe. Christina put a couple of figures together for us. With Foxborough Cable Access as help, we're able to hold 94 public meetings in 2020 and 124 meetings in 2021 with remote board and public access. I don't think there was a person in town that didn't have the ability to make their voices known remotely, certainly if they had the ability to do that. And this impressively was only accounts for 25% of the programs that Foxborough Cable Access produced during those two years. Without your support and volunteers and dedication to providing the town with critical information and access to boards and committees during the past two years, as well as all our, as well as all our town's offices, would not have operated at the same level pre-pandemic and we true, as pre-pandemic, and we are truly grateful for everything you did over the past two years and continue to do for us in town, bringing government meetings and information to the residents. So we got this beautiful plaque for you guys to put up. I'm going to read the plaque. Actually, it's gorgeous. Award of Excellence. We honor the staff and volunteers of Foxborough Cable Access in recognition of the exemplary service and dedication in providing the town of Foxborough the professional means to stay connected remotely to public meetings and inform during the COVID-19 pandemic, and for your ongoing commitment to providing public, government, and educational programming for the Foxborough community. Presented July 19th, 2022, on behalf of a very grateful town of Foxborough Board of Selectmen.
Thank you very much.
Want a photo op?
I think so. Yeah, do you guys want to introduce yourselves? I mean, we know who you are, but I don't know if everyone...
Appreciate that. Rick Plasmati and Matt Shea, both board members. There's a number of other board members that couldn't join us this evening. I don't know if there's anybody else in the room, but we just thank you for, for the recognition. I remember the day Aaron Heier called me and said, "We need to do Zoom tonight."
And we don't have an account.
And, yes, and I was in the car, happened to be near a Best Buy, turned around, hopped in, and we kind of figured out together what we needed to kind of cobble this together. And, you know, I was thinking, when you guys put this on the agenda, the town was in a good position technology-wise to be able to do this. Imagine doing this in the former Town Hall building with the screens and everything else and the PA systems. With our successes during the pandemic, we were actually, people were reaching out to us from other community access stations that were struggling to figure out the hybrid of, you know, Zoom and in-person. A lot of towns went full remote. It was, it's been an interesting time, and we do just view ourselves as, as trying to be partners with the town, and certainly during the pandemic, just everybody in town was trying to do what they could to, to help out. So we're proud of ourselves for being able to, you know, help and push us forward. And it's interesting to see how this is moving municipal meetings forward, I think, technology-wise. I mean, just watching what we were just doing, that's not something that would happen a couple of years ago. And I know that at the State House, there's lots of conversations happening about what the long term is going to be with open meeting law and remote participation. I understand they just extended the remote meeting till March, I think, of 2023. But there's talk about closed captioning, there's talk about requiring, and so it's just going to be interesting seeing, you know, how this plays out moving forward. So again, thank you to my board for all their support throughout this. The volunteers, Paul Beck's on our board, he's, you know, behind the controls.
Aw.
And I do want to also mention Alexa Correa, who's a high school student who has been behind the controls, doing a lot of the meetings. Junior in high school, going into her senior year, and she was also a big help, because we, you know, expanded, we, before the pandemic, had school committee and selectmen meetings, and now we're doing a lot more meetings. And so she's been really good helping us out, so appreciate that.
So very grateful. Thank you.
You know, one more quick thing, if I could. You know, we all have, one of the reasons we wanted to make sure we did this is we all talk about police. We all talk about fire. We talk about DPW and Town Hall, but I really wanted to make sure that Foxborough Cable Access was, you know, let people know that you guys were just as important and probably at times more important a cog in that whole transition area. You guys did a phenomenal job.
There's a couple just quick things.
Of course.
20 seconds. We now have an HD channel. I don't know that everybody knows that.
No.
So Comcast 1072, so the meeting right now is on Comcast 1072. Probably more exciting when you're watching high school sports than maybe a government meeting in HD, but... when you're watching high school sports than maybe a government meeting in HD, but it has that capability. The other thing that we've added is we now have the ability to do closed captioning. So that's now an accessibility option for folks, both, right now it's on Comcast. And we're also now indexing the meetings, which is something that's fairly new. So through the senior tax program, we have somebody coming in usually the next day after a meeting. Deb Wendell's been doing most of that and timestamping these meetings based on their agenda items. So when somebody wants to go back and do some research or find it, you know, they can just click on the timestamp. It jumps right to that spot in the meeting. So it makes it a little bit easier. So I just wanted to mention those couple of enhancements we've been doing over the, you know, past few months to kind of improve things.
It's exciting, all of it.
Chair, I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, thank you to all of you for all the work that you did. Mike, Mike never said no to anyone, I think, on the planet. When we asked him to do something, he just was there for us. At a moment's notice, they say, "Mike, I need you now," and he was here. So, and that goes to everybody at Cable Access period. But with respect to the HD channel, I know Mike fought very, very hard for that inclusion in the next license. And it was one of the things that I know the cable companies did not want to relinquish an HD channel, but Mike fought and the board fought very, very hard for that ability to have that in the next license. So it's to his credit and to the board's credit that they pushed for that and got that through. And so I want to say congratulations on that. Foxborough Cable is considered a very, very high standard across the Commonwealth. And it's because of the fine work that they do, and it's because they never say no. And they cover a lot of things that most committees don't do. And I think it's really a credit to the community, a credit to their program, credit to their entire staff for what they do. And I just want to say thank you as well.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk quick, just like two seconds about the legislation while we're here, too?
Sure.
I thought rather than waiting for later, it could just kind of tie into this discussion since we touched on it.
So remote access has been granted an extension to March 31, 2023. It is entirely possible that the legislature will eventually adopt that as a permanent, permanent part of how we do government. It's become so popular and actually quite convenient for people, you know, both individuals who want to present as well as staff members to key into a meeting and to be able to present from their homes or at least from their offices if they're not able to make it. It's so difficult sometimes for people just to get here to a different location due to traffic or just the distance by which, you know, people come. But I think this is really a very, very positive outcome of what came out of a very difficult time, a very dark time for most people in this state and across the country. So I do think this is a very positive change. I think it's something that you're going to see is really being welcomed and appreciated across the state. So I'm glad, I'm grateful that the legislature actually approved it on both, in both houses, and the governor's going to support it as well. So we'll be able to have that at least until 2023 with the possibility of make it, make it approved permanently.
All right, great. I think we all want a picture, if you guys don't mind. Maybe Mr. Beck can come out as well. Where's Beth?
Um, I think we can maybe pull the shade down. That way it's not getting bright and sunlight. Give us space, please.
Okay. Is this one okay, Kristina?
Gather on the...
Can I get in? You gentlemen up front?
Go ahead. Nobody wants to jump in front of you. Go ahead. I'm in the background here.
All right, I can see everybody.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thanks, everyone. Congrats.
Congratulations.
All right, so shifting gears. I really wanted to try to stay, stay on time tonight, but such great news. So 7:15, we have Two Washington Street Proposed Warehouse, discussion about proposed warehouse in S1 District. So as I mentioned at the start of the meeting, this meeting that we're having now is part of the code, so it's 9.1.4.2, that an informal meeting with the Board of Selectmen shall happen prior to the public hearing so that we may present our comments to the Special Permit Granting Authority. The public hearing is still open. So that next public hearing is August 11 at 7:45 in the Foxborough High School. As I did mention early on, we are not, and we are not required and will not be taking a vote on this. This is under the Planning Board's purview, and we will let them handle it. But I know I've watched every meeting. I don't know if everyone else has had a chance. I know, I think Doc was there live at some, but definitely have been following along. So has everyone kind of been following along, just so that Mr. Buckley can kind of, kind of keep it brief? And then I was thinking, if we have any comments, we can certainly talk about it. I don't want to get bogged down in too much, but if we do have comments, we can send them to Diana Gray, who can then compile them on our behalf and send them to the Planning Board for them to take into consideration as they see fit.
Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group. I'm here representing the applicant, Rock Point Fund Acquisitions and Griffith Properties LLC. So as you pointed out, this project is located at Two Washington Street. We're actually before the Planning Board and Conservation Commission. We've had two public hearings with the Planning Board and one public hearing with the Conservation Commission. And what we're applying for is, this is a 225,000 square foot warehouse located on a 30.5 acre parcel of land. I put the rendering up on the screen. You can look at it as I'm talking. This is the old, this is the parcel of land, I always call it Dimitris, Olive and Mint, Funway, et cetera, you know, Stone Forge. It's been more than a few things over the years. And what's proposed here is all of that activity will be removed. All of the existing improvements on the property will be demolished and removed from the property, and this building would be, will be constructed. So this land is located partially in the S1 zoning district. I'm going to show my hand. This is the zoning line, and on this side of it is the S1, and on this side of it is the limited industrial. And the activity that triggers this is what's going on in the S1 zone. But of course, everybody wants to talk about everything, which is fine, makes sense. So the site is going to be demolished, as I talked about, there'll be, this will be accessed, this facility will be accessed by one driveway. If anybody remembers, there's currently two access points up there now. So one driveway mostly on the southern side, and it's been designed in accordance. It's a little bit different from what's currently there. It's the new Mass DOT standard. Everybody knows Route 1 is a Mass DOT highway. So that driveway's come in, it will come in, it's about 32 feet wide. It's extra wide because one of the comments we received from the town's professional staff, specifically the police department, is they wanted to make sure that vehicles didn't get backed up on Route 1 coming into the site or even leaving the site. The site is, that building that you're looking at is approximately 500 feet back from Route 1. About 20% of it lies within the S1 district. The remainder lies in the limited industrial zoning district. There is approximately 190, we're proposing approximately 195 parking spaces for it, and it's approximately about 120 truck, trailer spaces, not necessarily truck spaces. And those are over there on the right-hand side of it. And this is trailer parking. There's 38 loading docks over here on the east side of it, and the parking for vehicles is on the south and west. The, what we've proposed is, we've spent a lot of time talking about it, talking, thinking about it, taking input from neighbors, boards, professional staff. And this building is laid out, we think, in a, as best as we can make it in this area. And in our opinion, it far exceeds the standards that we have to meet. So for example, we've made sure that the truck loading docks are over there on the right side as you're looking at the drawing, in order to keep them away from the homes on Tucker Lane and Meadowview Road. Car parking is on the south and west. We have a lighting plan that we've actually just revised to make sure that there's no wall packs on the buildings facing toward the residences. All of the lighting will be on the outside of the parking lot facing in toward the building. And the, we've also done a significant landscaping plan, again, which has been revised, was being revised as we speak. And what it does is, on the west side there and on the south side, it's anywhere, it creates a berm, anywhere from seven to 15 feet high. It's a combination of creating a berm and cutting the drug, cutting in the building into the grade there. So it's below the grade that is currently there. And on top of that, what we've also doing is we have a landscape plan that, in a general manner, has a six-foot tree every six feet on the west and south side. And right now, it is, it's a combination of deciduous and coniferous trees, coniferous trees. And the Planning Board at the last meeting, one of the members, and we agreed to, asked us to change that all to Jolly Green Giant. I think there are provides, I'm not really sure. So those are some of the changes we've made. And we've also, I'll touch on this because one of these, these are the major things. If you've been watching it, it's all about traffic for the neighbors over on, especially on Beach Street, Meadowview Road. So one of the things we've offered and agreed to is that currently Beach Street has a partial truck restriction that was put in when Patriot Place was permitted, along with the drive, along with the sidewalks and the islands at the beginning there, in order to cut back on any truck traffic going through there. So what we've offered to do is we will prepare all of the studies and documentation necessary for us, for the town, actually, not us, to petition Mass DOT to make that a permanent 24-hour no-truck operation. In addition, we've offered a, we've offered many conditions, but one of the major conditions we've offered is that we would have, we would, our vehicles would not be allowed to use Beach or North unless it happened to be a local delivery. So I think I'll stop right there. I could continue to talk for a half hour, but I know we're limited, and I'd rather just answer questions from the board.
So again, just an informal, it's really to give us a heads up and make sure we're aware of the project insanity feedback. I think, you know, we have the Planning Board who is elected and has this expertise for a reason. You know, we are in charge of the roads, and I think we've heard, you know, what the Beach Street neighbors have said. I believe some boulders have even gone up at the beginning of Beach that I've seen since this all started. So I think that, it sounds like the Planning Board's listening to that, hearing it, and some signs have gone up, some rocks have gone up. But, you know, I think, I think we share, you know, some of the same concerns, you know, as the neighbors naturally, given that it's our town.
Yeah, I know. I watched, I watched the meeting. So there were some site visits that were going to be arranged, is my understanding. Have those occurred yet, or?
There was one member who wanted to do a site visit, and she was going to coordinate with the neighbors. I mean, we'd be glad to take her around, but I think she won't, I think what she was trying to coordinate was, was visiting some of the neighbors' homes to see it. I don't know if that has been done.
I asked about it this morning, and it has not been set up yet, but it's in the works, but there's not, I mean, I know, I went and I drove down Willis, and I drove down Tucker, and I drove down Pickering, and, you know, drove down Meadowview. So while they haven't been led, I think many of us have, have been, you know, kind of following along and doing the same thing.
Curious about the, excuse me, the plan for fencing, Bill? Is it changing? Is it, is, what are we doing for the area around the property?
So what we're doing is, is a, we're doing, we've, it's a combination of things in the rear here. So let me just kind of turn your attention to this. This heavy green is, for the most part, this area is where there's no lines. See these lines along the edge here? That's the area where we're going to clear, and it's, that's grading. So, but the rest of it, like out in here, along here, on the edges, that's going to remain. So we're, we're going to, it's going to be a combination of what's there now, and then we'll be planting a berm with, or creating a berm with trees on top of it, and then the setback. So for example, the zoning does recognize that there, you need to be extra cautious when you have commercial against residential. So that, for example, up here in the limited industrial, if it's limited industrial against limited industrial, it's 10 feet. If it's limited industrial against residential, it's 20 feet. We're a minimum of about 75 feet. And actually, it's closer to, it's 100 feet because there's a buffer. So that's another thing that we've done, is we've pushed the building as far away as, you know, it's practical for us with our design. And that's where we're at. And, you know, we're open to any questions or alternatives that the Planning Board has requested us. And nobody's asked us to do fencing. They wanted to see trees, which I 100% agree with because trees grow and they don't fall down, and they don't do things like that, so.
We haven't heard from neighbors or butters that they want like a 10-foot chain link fence around for whatever reason.
Some, I've heard, and I don't know if it's in letters or just verbally, you know, some people were asking for like a highway barrier, things like that. And we never got into it. Planning Board hasn't talked about that.
Yeah, so I think I would summarize it as, obviously, there's a delicate balance between, you know, the neighbors and the S1 and L1 District. I think everyone's concerned about traffic, you know, not only on Beach Street, North Street, everywhere, you know, but we also have to balance that with, you know, it's Route 1, and, you know, there's going to be some traffic, but we don't want it coming through our small side streets. And then, you know, the, for me, the piece was interesting, too, on Amazon. Like, I know that there's no tenant yet, but, you know, vans are not trucks, and what does that look like? So if anyone has any comments kind of outside of those themes, you know, let me know. But I think even with that, we can send anything along those lines to Diana Gray. Or you can even send it to Christina, who can, who can, you know, maybe, do you mind putting something together just to send to Diana all at once? So, you know, maybe if you can send something by the end of the week if you have any comments. But it is, you know, like I said, it's just an informal, informal commentary for, for the board to take into consideration. And there's continued public hearings. I know I'll be watching and following all of them like we, like we have been as well.
It's in August. I think it's August.
August 11th at 7:45. And it is at the high school, so just a different location than usual, just due to the number of people. All right, with that, any, yes?
Yeah, there's only one thing. If you could just mention, because it's been brought up to me a couple of times. I know it's discussed ad nauseam at the planning meetings, but just discuss for people that are out there that might not have watched the planning meetings, the potential truck traffic going south in the North Street. I know you've explained it well, but explain it here, the North Street light versus the Gillette turnaround.
So we've hired a traffic engineer, McMahon Associates, and they've done an analysis of it. And one of the things they've looked at is, and, you know, you think about it, and it's been brought up multiple times, as Dr. Elfman says, you know, trucks are going to cut down Beach Street, cut down North Street, or if you're going to turn, make the turnaround. And I've seen trucks turn around in North Street, try to make that U-turn. It's crazy. But the reality is, is you cannot lie stupid. And so you head south, continue south, not even half a mile, and then you take a left at Rodman's, go underneath, and that's your turn. That's how a vehicle or a heavy vehicle or a long vehicle will make the U-turn. And that's what we anticipate. And one of the things that we can do is, and we've told it, is we'll make sure that our, you know, when you, when you have a tenant, you know, you can tell them, you can't, you have to do this, you have to do that, and they can work with their people to deal with that. It's not necessarily, it's more controlled than that. But, you know, you're always going to have people doing silly things. And I'm not sure how you would not eliminate that. I know that Mass DOT is doing some improvements out there at intersection, but I'm not sure any of them would, would stop that type of activity.
You know, normally I have a million questions, but, you know, I've been watching the meetings. And yeah, I mean, it's, for me, it's a very fine line because how it is zoned, and it, you know, I'm paying attention. Seems like you guys are really on top of lot. And I like the fact that as the meetings have been going on, the concerns of the residents, now you are addressing them as much as you can. And things are, you know, the last meeting, I heard you say, Bill, a number of times, that you've revised or revised. So, yeah, I mean, it's funny because in a perfect world, we could say you cannot use Beach Street, you cannot use North Street, or, and say it. But there was just, somebody sent me a picture last week, or it might have been a week and a half ago, there was a truck trying to turn onto Beach from mechanic, and, you know, then it clogged up the whole traffic because he couldn't make the turn, and then...
You can see the tire tracks up on the mulch.
Yeah.
So maybe more rocks, too.
So, I mean, I guess, you know, and it, for me, it's hard not knowing, I know we don't know who the tenant is going to be. And so it's hard for me to really pound on any specific questions because all depending on what comes in, there could be different stuff. So right now, as Leah said, I guess I have to, because this isn't my forte either, I have to be comfortable with the Planning Board addressing it. So I just want, those at home always know, always have a million questions, but I think we just have to keep following the process in the next, the next meeting and see where you guys go from there. So that's my, as far as my opinion from, from me being a member of this board, you know, that's not really, like you said, that isn't, we're not here to vote on or make decisions. know, that's not really, like you said, that isn't, we're not here to vote on or make decisions, maybe just to stay on top of what's going on, so.
Yep. All right, great. Any, anyone, any other questions? I think we're good. No? Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, up next, we have the Town Pound and Chestnut Path request to perform maintenance work. If you guys can just each introduce yourselves and I think, I mean, I know who you are, but let us know what, what board you're from. Molly will save you for the, for after Bill's piece.
Good evening, my name is Bill Lord, I live at 29 Baker Street. I'm also the vice chair on the Historic District Commission.
Christian Edgar, 55 Main Street, I'm the chair of the Historic District Commission.
Mark Rensick, 11 Union Street, I am the chairman of the Foxborough Historical Commission.
And so, we're, we're here this evening to present to you all, there's two historic sort of sites located on Granite Street and on Baker Street. One, it's on Granite Street, if you go down Route 140 and you make a left onto Granite Street and you go down the hill past Market Street, there's that parcel of land that's surrounded with stone, it's kind of untouched and it gets overgrown from time to time, but originally what it was is, here at the common, we had all the stray animals gather and eventually the board of selectmen voted not to have the Town Pound at the common because of the animals just doing whatever they got to do on, on the, the common. And so, for ever, you know, convenient area, they were able to find, the, the town board of selectmen ordered that the pound be relocated and therefore we believe that it's relocated to Granite Street. And over the years, boy scouts and different volunteer groups do it, but this time, me and a, a good friend of mine in the audience wanted to, you know, revitalize the area. It's a scenic route and I grew up on Granite Street and so I wanted to continue to improve the, you know, the scenic route. If, if anyone's walked down Granite Street to Prospect to Water and back to South, it's a wonderful trip around Coacasset Lake. And so, that's the, that's the first thing I want to do. And then the second thing, if you have any questions about that, we can.
Go, go with the second one, then we'll take questions.
Second thing I want to do, if, between 17 and 21 Baker Street, as you walk towards Chestnut Green from the common, there's a small path that the straw, originally the straw workers would take, to work from Baker Street into, there was a straw hat factory, one of the straw hat factories back there. And then later, the employees for the Foxborough Company would also take this, it's a pedestrian path, it's about 10 feet wide. And again, over the years, it's overgrown and so we're just asking for both of those properties to just clear down, so specifically in the Town Pound is to clear to the grade, no, no movements, no changing anything or configuration. And then the ask I have is to move any organic material to the, the town recycle, like long clipping pit off of Elmer Street. And then any trash I, I handle myself. And the other ask with that is, I've worked with the Historic Commission to come up with a, a citation for a metal tablet plaque that you see as you walk around town, there's different versions of them, specifically one at the entrance of Baker Street at the Historic District at the, in front of the Doolittle Home. And then the, the same thing with the, with the, with Chestnut Path, I just want to clear right over the, where the walkway is, about seven feet up and just all the way through to the other side, which is Railroad Ave. And that's pretty much it. If any other one wants to add.
It was a great path to ride down as a child. Many, many zips up and down that path and around the block.
Can't even picture where it is, I have no.
Hard to see.
Do you know Larissa's, the green?
Yeah.
It's right next to Larissa.
And the white multifamily?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Oh.
The big white one.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's very narrow.
Yeah.
You can see more from Baker Street, you can't see it so much on Railroad Ave.
Right.
It's pretty well overgrown.
Well, it's cool history and it sounds like a really great project.
Well, you know, as Phil said, that, that nice walk around, probably do that walk two, three times a week. And I've always wondered what that cistern looking area was. I thought it belonged to the neighbor to the left, but did you, did anybody start clearing that out already? It looked like there was a mound that was already cleared out.
So, yes, the answer is yes, but we decided that was best to seek the board's endorsement before we continued any further.
Okay. Yeah. I thought it looked great being cleared out, so.
It's already being noticed.
Yes, it's already being noticed, in other words, yes. And as much, oh, I'm sorry, as much as I walk up and down Baker Street also, I never knew there was a path there. That'll be cool.
Yeah.
And I know that Historic approved it, we have that in here and it sounds like you guys are on board with the plaque, so I love to see the boards working together as well. So, it, it's just all around, seems like a great, great project.
Yeah, we're very happy with it, they came to our meeting and we're all for it.
All right, great.
Bravo.
Any other questions? All right, let's see, do we have a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion.
Yeah, we do, okay.
Motion to approve the maintenance work to be performed and funded by a private group of citizens on the old Town Pound and Chestnut Path with any memorial plaques to be approved by the Historical Commission.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great. And while we had some of the Historic District Commission, we had someone that was on that committee that actually moved out of state, I believe.
Correct.
Thank you, thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
And a big piece of that committee, much like the design review, is it's very specific about who makes up that committee. So, when that person had left, I believe that we, you know, the board sought to find someone new to fill those shoes in the Historic District Commission. So, Molly, do you mind just coming up and introducing yourself?
Of course. Hi, my name is Molly Kelleher, I live at 22 Baker Street.
All right, tell us a little more, you grew up in town.
Sure. Yes, I, um, let me get on my resume. I was born and raised in Foxborough, my husband was born and raised in Foxborough. We live on Baker Street, we bought our house there in 2015. We have two sons, Liam, who is 10, and Caleb, who is eight. And we love our town. We lived briefly in North Attleboro when we were first married because at the time, we were priced out of Foxborough and then as soon as we could get back, this was our priority to come back to town and we love our town and we'll be here forever.
I couldn't let you, you know, not mention that you both grew up in town, so.
We do, yeah, and both are, both sets of our parents were also born and raised in Foxborough, so.
And there's a certain fire chief by the name of Kelleher.
There is, yes, yep, yep.
Yeah, so, and I don't believe you're on any committees or boards now, right?
Oh, I know.
So, it's always great when someone starts to get involved.
Yeah, I was thrilled to be afforded the opportunity to get involved.
All right, great. So, do we have any, like, housekeeping stuff, Christina? Has the other member resigned? Are we all good there? Christian, did you get anything?
We had a couple of email exchanges, I think she understands what she needs to do, so we shouldn't have a problem, but I'm excited, I just have to say, lived in town my entire life, lived on Baker Street, it's so nice to see young families with kids moving in. So, we've had a lot of movement in and out of Baker Street and it's great to hear little kids running up and down the street and giggling and playing in the backyards again, so we've all grown up, we've moved away, so it's nice these guys are coming in.
Yeah, so it's, it's great to see you step up and be willing to, to join this committee.
Really excited about it.
So, we figured we would have, we would, I would, I figured I would have her, her do this piece while they were already up here, so.
Awesome.
I think with that, we just have a quick motion and then can let you guys, let you guys go.
Good. Motion to appoint Molly Kelleher to the Historic District Commission for a term to end May 31st, 2025.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, great, thanks, guys.
You so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Squadron 21? Okay, by process of elimination. Thanks, Gary. All right, so, it's the first time we're seeing you, do you mind just introducing yourself? And I happened to see like a Facebook post about the business, so tell us a little bit about your business and then what you're doing as well.
My name is Emmanuel Piver, I'm the owner of Squadron 21's Foxborough Cornhole Facility. I opened, eight weeks ago, I opened up a cornhole facility at the old Foundry Building, where it used to be the old World's Gym.
Okay.
To, you know, I, I started getting into cornhole and it's growing in the Northeast and there was really nothing in Foxborough area, Mansfield, Foxborough area of that sort. I was traveling an hour to play. So, I started it, you know, I, I worked out with my realtor to get it going here so I could have it here, because it was people from Boston, people from Providence, it would bring business to here and it was also close to my house. So, I, in the process, I, I have the opportunity of, you can rent courts to play, people have tournaments there, people have birthday parties, charity events, all kinds of things. And one of the options is to have a, someone had approached me to do a fundraiser for, on August 13th to, and part of it, I'm asking for a 24-hour liquor license in order to help with the fundraising as a form of bringing income for it, you know, because with the cornholes and the, you know, we, we have a possible food truck as well and having a, a liquor license, I'm teaming up with Shovel Town Brewery in Stow, which actually is also building in Foxborough here. They talked to me that they would provide beers and I'm, I'm not sure if they have any wines or anything, but he had indicated that he needed a liquor license, 24-hour liquor license in order to have him bring his stuff here. So, that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
And it looks like you have, or whoever filled out this application, some bartending experience and?
Yes, that is myself, I have 12 years of bartending, I have my service safe.
Okay.
I've pretty much did 11 years at Gillette Stadium, volunteer for my kid's school. They have a booth there and I've been doing it for 11 years, so I've seen every single ID known to me. A lot of fake ones I've actually laughed at and I'm like, you know, some of them I saw was, it's just instant UC and from doing bartending, you see it as well. And I'm always up to date with a last, like a vendor or liquor store for their newest IDs, you know, around and I just keep them in my pocket and just bring it up on my phone so I know. And talking with Shovel Town, they have all their service safe people that will helping, that will be helping part of the process of checking IDs also. And in addition, I will, I'm going to get like a stamp, checking people out, but most of the, I feel that most of the people that are going to come and play cornhole are going to probably be 21 and over.
Okay. And you do understand that with the one day, the liquor has to come in and out that same day, so it can't come in the day before, it can't leave the day after, just that's, that's usually like an FAQ that comes up.
I've already talked to John from Shovel Town and I'm, we're planning on being like first thing in the morning and then after the facility, he will remove everything off-site.
Okay. And is it usually like BYOB kind of thing there?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Do they need an entertainment license or anything with the one day with the, with the music and anything? I don't know.
It's just basically going to be iPad with the radio.
So, it works too.
I guess, mainly because I haven't heard of you guys, so how long have you been up there? I get that a lot, I, I have a lot of advertising, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm on Facebook and all the different media sites, my. Oh, that's why I haven't heard of you.
We will come have a ribbon cutting if you want, we have these big scissors, this ribbon. The newspaper comes.
April 1st, I've been reaching out to a couple newspapers and no one returns my calls back.
Well, if you want to do it, we'll do it, so just let us know.
I really appreciate it.
So, how long, how long have you been up there?
Eight weeks.
Eight weeks. And you're on that second floor where the gym used to be?
Where the gym used to be, they remodeled everything, the owners are incorporating and rebuilding there. There's a yoga place next to, to myself, there's karate, the old archery is still there.
Okay.
The Modern Works Furniture, and then I have the whole floor pretty much for the cornhole.
And how many courts do you have?
I have eight.
Eight.
I can hold up, I've had 64 people at one time.
So cool.
And it's great, it's, people of all ages and levels can play and it's great, entertaining, good exercise, it's a good time, you know, and it's good to do during the summer, because we have AC. And just trying to, you know, help get the community going, help me going, you know.
Yeah, I feel like there's so many partnerships, like with the Council on Aging, they do, they had cornhole at the Senior Olympics, like local fundraising stuff, yeah.
I've been trying to do, I, I'm in, in contact with best buddies to have them come in and play. And I, you know, I might, just to have them have that experience of, and it's, it's a sport that pretty much anyone can play, you know. I've actually brought my, I'm in the process of bringing my boards to Providence to a facility that they're all handicap.
Wow.
And they, I brought it one time and they, people in the wheelchairs were playing and they loved it and they asked me to come back again, so.
Great, great, neat new business, yeah.
Good story.
Yeah.
Trying.
And are you good? Can you like whole floor in a row?
I've gotten my, I'm getting better. I, I was lucky enough to have a pro last week just show up in my facility and play and he was like, Benny, you're a nice guy, can I give you some pointers? I said, I would love the pointer. So, we sat for about an hour throwing and, you know, I, like I said, I, eight weeks, I just started it. I, I went to a tournament, I loved it and I didn't have a place to practice. So, I basically was going an hour to the tournaments to play, so I said, I can never compete with these guys who have been doing it for like 12, 13 years. So, I, I felt how many other people are in the same boat as me that doesn't, don't have a chance to play or just want to practice and can rent a court. I figured like bowling, like pool, you rented for an hour and just come and play and practice and have people just come off the street and just have, you know, four buddies or whoever just come and play and have.
It's all regulation distance and everything.
Everything's, I measure every day.
It's Squadron 21 and what do the hours look like right now?
I have Mondays from 4:30 to 9:30, Tuesdays and Wednesdays are off, Thursdays is my tournament nights. I started with five and I'm up to 40 people now.
Wow.
And Fridays is pretty much 4:30 to 9:30 and Saturdays between 12 and 9:30, 10:30.
Just a strange question, but where'd you get the name?
It was interesting, it started off as, originally it was going to be, I had the Top Gun theme with Bomb Baggers was my theme and then when the guy went to do my logo, he changed it on me. I said, why did you change it? And he said, do you really want something on the side of your building that has bombs and magazines on it? I was like, okay, point taken. So, I was looking at, there is the best, I've always been into planes and all kinds of stuff, so the, the, there is a, the United States has the Elite 21 Squadron, Squadron 21, I mean, the 21st Squadron Elite Team, they're like the best of the best fighter pilots. So, I couldn't use that name, so I said, well, you need 21 points to win and you have the Elite, so I went, the Elite 21 and Squadron 21 is cornhole, so that's where it came from.
Great, yeah.
So, so quick question, what was your first name?
It's Emmanuel.
Emmanuel. So, so Emmanuel, how, so this is going to be, you know, from 10 to 10, it'll be people coming and, coming and going all day.
Pretty much.
Obviously because it's a, yeah, because you're fundraising. So, what's the connection with the license and the fundraising? Is there, I mean, so obviously you're gonna, you're, you're, you're taking, you're taking out the license yourself, so you're taking the responsibility of having the license. So, is the, whoever's doing the fundraising that day, are they getting a piece of the alcohol?
Proceeds will go from, the alcohol will be delivered from Shovel Town.
Yep.
And whatever they sell will go towards the charity.
Okay, okay, so it's all, all going to them, okay. I was just curious, because you're the one taking on the responsibility of the liquor license.
I know, I understand that.
Which, which, but, but if it's, if people come and they like it, they'll, they'll Which, but if it's, if people come and they like it, they'll come back.
That's the goal. It's a win-win for all three parties. Shovel Town, myself, and, you know, it goes to a good cost. It's actually for a fundraiser to open a curling facility in Rainham. So they reached out to me because they thought it was a great idea.
Curling is getting hot too after the Olympics. But people, I love to watch the curling. I'm like, it's kind of boring, but yeah. Well, good for you. That's, that's nice. You're, you're doing fundraising there too. I think it's a win-win, like you said, win-win for you. Good.
All right, I think we're ready for a motion.
Good. Motion to approve a one-day beer and wine license for Squadron 21ers, Inc. on August 13th from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great. Thank you.
Always welcome to come and say.
Seriously, if you do want, I know it sounds like you already did one, but if you wanted to do one, like the bakery did one, they didn't do it the day they opened, so, you know, let us know.
I would appreciate it and like.
Because we get maybe a picture in the reporter, you know, just even to something else, yeah.
I've been trying to reach out to people to, you know, I don't know how more to get advertised.
Yeah, Christine, I can probably reach out to you and.
Also, I believe I have a check for you.
All right, great. All right, so moving on, we have the town manager goals for fiscal year '23. I'm going to turn that over. Do you mind leading that discussion, Seth?
Sure.
Okay, great.
So I was just going to pull up, so.
And we've all have these tonight, I think.
Yeah, just pulled together goals based on what had been developed over past years. Some of them fell off that were either complete or just not as relevant anymore and added some that were a little bit more specific towards, you know, where we're thinking about heading as a town and to help with decision-making and it is leading us in that direction. So that's, that was the intent. Also, we thought about sort of, one of the things that was thought about here was sort of goal criteria so that we're thinking about measurable goals and how we can measure against a specific criteria. If we don't have them, we can maybe develop for some if it's appropriate. But, so that was, that was the thought that was put in, so. That's where we developed this set of goals, so.
I like the size of it. I think it's manageable. It's precise. I think you did a great job on these when I reviewed them.
Yeah, and again, a lot of it was already there, so I just tweaked some stuff, pulled some stuff off. And, I mean, it's still open to whatever, you know, this board thinks is appropriate, but.
I mean, I'm okay to approve them, but we don't have to approve them tonight if anyone, you know, has comments or needs more time to think about them. But I, I am open to approving them. I don't know, Bill, if you are.
I'm fine with it. I think, I think they're great. I mean, I don't, I think they're, like you said, they're manageable, they're realistic. You know, some of this stuff actually sort of sets you up for the next manager.
Exactly. I think that's really the intent, yeah.
So I think that's really, I think it's well-placed in that regard, so. And so we'll set the foundation a little bit for that and then I think the transition will work pretty well.
No, the only question I had, you brought up Seth, because I'm familiar with the criteria being, you know, you have the objective and then you have the criteria to measure your performance against the objective.
Right.
You know, that's a daunting task and would take a lot of time to fill in that column. But I'm sure that work could be done going forward.
Yeah. Agreed.
I mean, I'm okay with voting on them, then if we're all, it sounds like we're all okay, so we can probably take a motion to approve the goals. We've had them on here for a couple meetings, so by no means are they, you know, being just introduced for the first time today. I think we're all now finally comfortable with them.
Motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 town manager goals as proposed.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just thank you for taking me on, Seth.
Yes, thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. All right, the next one is really meant to be a high-level discussion. So I think everyone agrees that the town charter has not been looked at in a while. And I think everyone agrees that we need to look at it. I don't think we're here to talk about the specifics. I think that will come. But in my, in my opinion and from the discussions I've had, this is probably a one and a half to three-year project. From the time you kick it off to selecting the committee, to reviewing it, to, I mean, probably even longer when it comes to town meeting to enacting changes. So I think that the intent of this discussion is to get a formal feel from the board if we want to kick this off. And then I think really just timing. I think we need to, we don't have enough time to do this before the town manager comes. And I don't think we want to kick it off right as they come. The new town manager is going to have, you know, a lot on their plate probably for the first six months to a year. So I think we all want to do this and we probably want to formally kick off some of the discussions once the new town manager is here. You know, as far as what the timeline looks at, like what the committee looks like and the meetings from there. But I think the intent of this is, you know, do we want to move forward with this? And, you know, thoughts on, thoughts on timing?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, Leah, you mentioned committee?
Well, I mean, there's, some towns use a committee. So I would imagine it would be more than the five of us. There might, might be in other towns, actually Mike Johns said he was part of the committee in the town that he lives in, where they found a group of, I forget if he said it was seven to 10?
Right, so typically what would happen is that the selectman would appoint a charter review committee. And that would typically, you know, seven to 10 people, seven to nine people, if you will. You would then, and that group would put together a number of recommendations that would then be presented to the board. The board could then, you know, solicit input, of course, from the public on those as well. And then make a recommendation to town meeting as to what changes you'd like to make. Ultimately, because you're, this is a special act, it would require an amendment to be sent to the legislature. And probably would require, and would require a town vote as well, a town elected vote. So you, so those are things that you need to consider. The, one of the things, I had a conversation actually with Pat Costello about this. I said, because, you know, there are different versions of charters and special acts and this is, this is not a full charter document. It's a more of a, it's a special act that talks about the governance of the community. So it may, it may be of great interest to you to take a look at sample charters to see if in fact there was language that you think is missing that maybe helped clarify some things and to help, you know, bring. Some things have been debated for years, even since the charter's been, or the special act's been adopted. So it's time to sort of address those things and probably try and put those things to bed. But, but there are things that, you know, that will always be left as a debated issue. And I think, but seeing some of the other forms will probably help you clarify some of those issues. So I think that's something that Pat recommended that, he said, you know, I think it's a good idea. And I, you know, I served on the former government committee for years in Massachusetts and that's what we do is we present different charter forms to everybody and let them decide. We don't tell them what to do. It's really the community's decision. That's how they want to do it.
Yeah, I think we'll have the best success, although we'll decide what goes on the warrant, you know, engaging the community, engaging different boards and committees, you know, maybe even internal resources to really get the best revisions possible for us then to kind of finally approve. So I don't know if you had other thoughts or?
Curious as far as a review committee or charter review committee, who that would be and how we would select those folks?
One, one thought would be to, you know, you definitely, you would look at people across a wide spectrum. So, and I've seen different ways to approach this where board members will each will come up with one recommendation for themselves that they would like to see appointed. And then maybe come up with two additional or for four additional members that you would take from, say, different segments of the community. So you, it's really appropriate to have some folks who agree and some folks who disagree to serve on the committee. So you have, you know, a good opportunity for debate to make sure that whatever is recommended has been fully vetted.
So I don't think we have an answer on it though. I think ultimately that would probably be Seth, like step one. You know, do we want to do, do we want to do a search committee? Who makes up the committee? What does that look like? What does the timeline look like? What does the steps look like?
Yeah, I just struggle to see how that comes together and finding enough people who are interested in doing this. Is it citizens who are not currently engaged in any other boards and committees? Are we pulling from people we already, you know, there's a sort of a smallish group of people in town who seem to keep being pulled back into things? Seems like something that would be challenging to.
To do both.
Do, you know, staff.
It is done both ways. I mean, I can tell you that there are people who serve on active committees that participate as well as folks that have sort of retired from committees, you know, have, so have a good, good understanding of how the town works. And then you have folks that have never really participated at all, but really, you know, have, are interested in finding how the, how the town works and what they think could be changed to make it better.
Yeah. Is there any appetite or opportunity to sort of chunk things out or identify some things that we think we could talk about earlier and do in pieces? Or is it we have to take the whole thing all at once and try to?
Many, many times committees, the most successful changes to these types of documents is that it's done in chunks and not in the whole document because it's just a lot to digest. And so I think if you, you can do it over several years where you can actually say, you know, we've looked at this section, we've looked at that section, we've looked at this section, and these are things, these are recommendations that we make. And then see, you know, how the town feels about that. You don't have, I wouldn't recommend taking on the whole thing at once because I think it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work.
So that makes sense to me just because there's a couple of things that I have thought about that I question as if it's the, if it's the most appropriate or best approach for the town. And if I could just throw a couple of examples out there, I don't, I don't want to create any waves or anything, but. So one example is elected versus appointed town officials. So I've talked to Bob Cutler about, Bob Cutler, our town clerk. Currently, he is in elected position. And, you know, I question, what about that role drives the need for a vote? What decisions does the town clerk make that people might have differing positions on? Or is it just something that we want the best person to be appointed to that role to do that work the best that they can? So that's.
Yeah, because elected, I mean, somebody with no qualifications could decide to pull papers and get elected.
Elective positions are very hard to change as well. Like if, outside of an election, you know, if someone needs to be replaced or, you know, whatever it may be, it becomes more challenging.
Do you remember that there was a warrant article about changing that? And it was a dead tie.
It was.
Yeah, it's a dead tie. Like say it was 1,025 to 1,024, something like that.
Actually, it wasn't actually, it wasn't the issue. The issue was whether or not they was going to grant what was called that Bob would never have to run again for the position. That was the issue.
Yeah.
And it was a dead tie. You're right. So it didn't, it didn't pass.
He was looking to try to change it to, to a high, basically a hired position, right? Like somebody, he would have been hired and, and so, but yeah, it was, it was never saw anything like that with like, you know, you're not talking like 10 people sit in a room, it's five and five. Thousands of people voting, so.
That's tough.
Yeah, that is, that's an interesting one, Seth.
And just, just one other, one other thing that I had thought about was in terms of the advisory committee. So the town moderator is an elected position. And people might wonder why that would be an elected position. But in essence, when you elect a town moderator, you're also electing the advisory committee because the town moderator appoints every single member of the advisory committee. There's supposed to be 15 members. I don't know why 15, seems like a lot of people. I know that when I was on it, if we had 12, you know, it was four people, four or five people sort of had a lot of input, others sort of just sat back and listened. So those types of questions are the things I'm thinking about that maybe we could refine as we, as we go through this process.
And then what, so in this process, if there were changes that we wanted to make, is then, is that then, so you might have a group that's going to bring, and then it comes before the board of selectmen and the board of selectmen would vote on any changes of what the charter is?
What would happen is that the selectman would take the report of the advisory committee, of the recommending committee. And then you would then have the ability to propose amendments to town meeting.
Oh, so it would go on the warrant? So it would go on the warrant?
Yeah, it would go on the warrant and then ultimately would have, probably have to go, because it's a, it was a home rule petition or it was a special act rather. It would probably require, I'm not sure how was it approved. Was it, was it approved by local election when it was done, 2004, 2000? As I recall, I think it was a special election for that. But then typically what happens is that it would then require the election, then go to the legislature for final action.
So I've been through something like this before, a bylaws review. And it's, it's a real daunting initiative. And you have to identify the scope. Then you have to prioritize within that scope what you're going to really look at. And I love the idea of, you know, not starting from scratch, but looking at best practices from other communities and saying, because a lot of times it's not what's in the charter, it's what's not in the charter.
Right.
You know, that you have to look at as well. So it is, it is daunting and it can go on for years. But if you can, you know, identify a scope, prioritize it, you know, and have people that are pretty, pretty good at that kind of stuff, I think it can get off to a good start.
And I think just the, the other thing is, you know, given the change of leadership, you know, it's probably not fair to have it be happening in the middle when someone comes in. Like you probably want to let them get their feet wet and then start that. So I do think timing-wise, you know, that makes the most sense in my mind just to set the next person up for success as well and to be part of that process as well.
Yeah, I think that one of the things, one of the dangers of that, of course, is that you, you create a threatening environment to the new manager. You know, how is this going to affect me, you know, if this charter gets changed? So I think you got to be careful about that. But I do think that generally speaking, there are, I mean, I can, I can probably cite to you, there's probably at least a dozen areas of questions that I've had over the years, past 10 years, that are just not clear because there are conflicts between the bylaws and the charter, which, you know, which takes precedence. I mean, it, it sort of infers that it's, it's the charter versus, or the special act versus the bylaw. And, but yet it's not always interpreted that way. It's not, it's not always been read that way.
Well, that's really important feedback. If you can put pen to paper, you know, over the next however many months and just make sure that that historical knowledge gets put down because that'll probably even help us, you know, guide things that we may not think of, you know, above and beyond the list that you've brought up. So that's the purpose of this discussion today. I think, you know, that we, we don't want to lose sight of it. So Christine, I know we have like a parking lot of things that we, you know, keep on the back burner for when they're ready for primetime. So I think, it sounds like we all agree that we want to do something, but just we need to wait a little bit just for the timing to be right.
I mean, one of the things that I hope to be able to leave, I mean, is, certainly there's been a lot of great things that we've, a lot of things we've all worked on together and accomplished together. But I think it's important to point out the things that still need some work and still need to be clarified because this is an ongoing process. It's going to continue to be an ongoing process. So I think at least I can offer a perspective from the period of time I've been here to what's worked really, really well and what has been not so clear. And I think it, you know, if we can try and clear it up a little bit, certainly an opportunity to do that.
Yeah, well, I think, and I don't remember, I know when I was chair, there were a couple of issues we had early on. And I don't remember them right now. But I think it's going to be real important for you, Bill, I mean, as a legacy to leave us with those dozen things to just chew on.
Yeah, I mean, not, not to, you know, not to cast an opinion, but more of a, these are things I've observed.
Correct, as observations that maybe that committee now can, correct.
Right.
Take with you. This is what I bumped up against and never really got a clear answer.
Right.
All right, so I don't think we need to take a vote or anything. It's just an informal discussion that we're all on the same page and, you know, maybe Q1, we start to kind of talk about it again and just check in and then go from there. All right, so I'm going to skip over Mike's piece since Mike's not here and we already covered the remote meeting legislation during the cable award and go right on to town managers update, which another selection committee in process. That's kind of similar to the charter discussion.
So I, we did, the RFQ is on, it's on the street. There are at least four companies that I'm aware of right now that have expressed interest. And so we're waiting to see what, we'll come back on that. I think this is really a two-part conversation tonight. One, to at least let the board know that the process is beginning. And two is the fact that you really need to start thinking about working on a selection committee because that's a really important piece of this process that will work hand in hand. That committee will work hand in hand with the new consultant to help make the selection process as smooth as possible. So what you want to think about, and you really need to have, make, come up with some recommendations before your next meeting, which is in August. You know, thoughts about who you would recommend to serve in the committee? I don't recommend you go much higher than seven people. The committees, the consultants will tell you that they would prefer five, but, because it just gets, becomes difficult to, you know, manage everybody's calendars. And this is a time process that you want to make sure stays on track. So I think a five to seven person committee would probably be in order. And if that's the case, then each of you could come up with a recommendation who you might want to, might want to have serve in the committee.
So I don't think we need to decide this tonight, but I do kind of hope that the search consultant will help us, help guide us a little bit on this. So I don't, again, I don't want to make the decision before we've hired the search consultant because I imagine they're going to have some best practices about what they've seen. You know, none of us have ever hired a town manager before in as much as we, you know, think who we, who we think it should be. I think we should come in with thoughts. I think we should come in with thoughts, but can we wait until we have someone selected?
You can, it just, it might delay the process even further because then you have to appoint the committee and then get the committee off and running. So I, theoretically, the, the, the person will be selected sometime in August. And then you'll get a contract straightened out by the first of September, and then the, the committee's going to be, consultants want to hit the, want to hit the ground running at that point. So it, the, the time will be here before you know it. So I just want you to start thinking about that sooner rather than later.
Yeah, and I have, um.
You might want to talk to maybe just a few other, you know, colleagues in other towns.
I have, yeah, so I have made calls to colleagues in other towns and, um, kind of the list I've come up with. And by no means is this communicated as the list. It's just some notes I've taken as I've talked and talked to people. But I'm thinking someone from the board of selectmen, um, someone maybe from DPW or someone, a department head in town. I don't know who it would be, but like maybe DPW, maybe planning, someone from school committee or a school committee designee. Maybe that's someone on that side, like a Billy Eukena. And then, you know, maybe it's one or two people from AdCom, one or two citizens at large that I think we would have to put something out to say, reach out to our office if you would like to put an application in. And I think the people should let us know, you know, fill out an application almost like the, the board and committee application that we have that goes over their experience, their qualifications, the time they have to give. So I think, you know, maybe we can put a call out there to people that want to serve, to give us their names.
And, and there is a, there is a, you do have a template already because you did, you know, when I was hired, there was a process.
Yeah.
So, and there is some of that that's still, that history's still available.
And I have not seen that yet.
Okay, so I can, I can probably get you that if necessary.
I'd be curious like who the committee was at that time.
Yeah, what the committee was, and then I would be, I would just caution you about hiring and, and the department reports directly to the town manager to serve in that process. Because it could be viewed as, I would caution you about using a department who reports to the town manager.
So maybe it could be someone in the department who's not, you know, who doesn't.
Like a, a school department would be fine, because they don't, but.
Like I think not, I haven't had no discussions, but I think Billy Eukena would be like an important person.
He did actually serve in a previous committee.
Yeah, I mean, like he's someone that comes to mind. There's some former AdCom people, you know, that come to mind. You know, I think we all probably have a citizen or two that comes to mind. So, um, you know, maybe if we can put something out there, Christina, that if you're interested in serving, you know, kind of details and TBD. But if you're interested in kind of putting your name in, you know, let us, let us know.
Yeah, because I, I think, I mean, the last thing I want to do is for us to get, like, you know, like Bill said, it might be good to be, as soon as everything's in place, we have a committee that's, that's up and ready to go. Because like you said, I'm sure you, you've come, like you threw Bill's name out, right? So you've come up with a, a list that you're kind of, you know, a broad list, but then somebody came, came to mind, you know? Like for me, I, I'm not going to mention any names, but I, I thought of a former selectman.
Oh, yeah, that's a good suggestion, yeah.
You know, I'm just going to say, because I already said, I, I already said to Jim DeVellis, would you be interested? Not that I, you know, I said, would you be interested only because he was part of the process that hired Bill? You know, not only a selectman, but, but part of the process. Now whether the rest of the board would like Jim or whether Jim would, you know, he kind of said, I'd be interested. So sorry if we out there, Jim, but.
Yeah, and that's the other thing is they have to be interested as well. As much as we want them, they're going to want to be doing it too.
Exactly, so I mean, I think, I think we probably, like you said, if you go through that, maybe somebody pops in all of our heads and maybe, maybe the, the way to do it is to say, hey, I thought of you. Could you, uh, reach, if you are interested, could you reach out and put your name in as being interested or something like that? And, um, and then maybe over the next couple of weeks, if we're, you know, I don't know, can we do that? Or we, you know, what if, what if two of us talk to the same person?
Yeah, I, I'm, and I'm, I'm just, I'm a little bit like, you know, there might be things we have to think about, you know? I'm looking at you, Dennis, just because of your experience, like from the diversity of the panel, like we can't, you know, like we have, there's other things that we have to be careful about, that I want to make sure that the search consultant also helps guide us in where they're here to do that. I don't want to, you know, I'm just, it's kind of the whole cart before the horse thing.
I mean, you have, you have the ability to interview these, these, these folks in a few weeks. So you may want to, that could be one of your key questions, you know, who would you include?
I was going to bring that up.
So we actually should, I, I, for, for the interviews, we should have the same questions that we're asking really, all of them. And I think that we should have those questions in advance, much like we do when we, you know, we're on a, if, if any of you have sat on the committees that hire, you know, department heads or, or things like that, just to make sure.
Questions for, for, for the committee?
Yes, yes, so we're going to meet on the 23rd. It is a special meeting, so that is not a normal meeting where it will just be to interview any of the RF, is it RFP, RFQ? RFQ respondents. So we do have to get ourselves together with that as well. So if everyone can, you know, send their questions to Christina in the next, you know, week or two, I'd say, maybe along with, you know, whatever you're thinking, I would.
So I do have one other procedural type question. So we're potentially getting together an ad hoc committee of townspeople. Are they to whittle it down to like three or four and then they come in front of us?
Yeah, usually like two to three.
Two to three, okay.
And, and, you know, it's the same process that just went on to hire the assistant superintendent, for example. It's a, it's a bigger committee that, you know, I, I believe, and I wasn't part of the committee, but they like put dots next to who they liked. And then that was the kind of first round. And then they brought people in for interviews and then they knocked it down further. And then they presented the final, whatever it was, two or three candidates to the board of selectmen. So again, you know, not to recreate the wheel, but there's a good process over there, different position, but same type of process that we can, you know, look at and learn from that as well.
So will the, um, the RFQ company, would, so would they, the guidance they're going to give us, are they going to, you know, say, well, hey, listen, you know, a, a town like Foxborough, you know, 17, 18,000 people, you have a stadium, you have this or whatever. Will they kind of then say, well, this is the criteria I think you'd be looking for? And do they run that by us? And we say, yeah, that sounds great. And then they go, they go for the search? Or do, do we kind of just give them free rein to?
No, we'll be approving and all that, will not be free rein. So I think the first thing is defining what we want in the candidate. So, you know, what qualities did Bill have that really worked? What do we want to look at, you know? What's important to us? So if you, I'm sure that they're going to present this next time, but they're going to go over that. And that's a big piece of here's step one, and it's defining what you want, what you want in a candidate, and then here's what step two looks like.
Then they're going to, then they're going to sit with us and say, okay, this is, you know, these are some suggestions. And then we'll say, that sounds good. No, I don't, maybe we don't like that, we're looking to go this direction or whatever. So we hire them, we have some questions for them, and then we kind of, between the two of us, we send them in the direction we'd like to see them go.
Yeah.
Yes, and then we pick one.
With their guidance, with their guidance, yeah.
They, they will give you direction and, and then you will also give him, them, direction. And they will, and they will follow the direction that you give them. So, um, it, but it, but it, the key thing for you is because you've not, none of you have been through this process, is they'll, they'll outline it for you and then they'll give you what's worked well in for them in other places and then give you those examples.
So my ask of, of, for the meeting on the 23rd would maybe be, um, like a 10-minute presentation. And there should probably be an agenda, like, you know, introductions and qualifications, what does your timeline look like? What, you know, what's the scope of the work that you're going to perform on our behalf? What's out of scope? So, you know, maybe they each have a set 10 minutes and then maybe we go through and, and, you know, there is, I think, four already right now, which we, do we have to bring all four and can we whittle it down before then? Like if someone doesn't meet a criteria, I don't think we can.
Yeah, unless they don't meet the criteria, but I think based on their current experience, they all pretty much meet that.
So then, and then, you know, maybe we ask a question or two of everyone and then I think that we make a selection.
What is the, um, like how many companies are there that do this? Is there, like, is there a?
So I've got a list here.
There's only about four.
Yeah, and there are some that are more national.
Yeah, there's bigger national companies, but you don't want to go there.
Yeah, like there's one out of Texas, there's one out of Chicago.
Like say, say, you know, say Canton was looking for a new town manager, they would probably be looking at roughly the same, four or five that we're looking at to hire.
And you can actually go out on their websites and like look at their ads. Like you can, you can look, like, it's actually really interesting. If you go out to, I forget which one of them, but if, you know, I'm sure you can send around the names of, of the whole, of all the bidders so far. But when you go out there, it's almost like a whole, an RFP they put out, you know? Here's the town, here's the profile of the town, here's what they're looking for. So it, it's like really a whole encompassing packet they put out, and you can look at the ads that are out there right now for some of the other towns. So, um, that's what I did. I looked at, I went out to a search consultant, I found a town that was advertising, I called the chair, I had a discussion with the chair. You know, they're handling, I talked to Brookline, they were handling it a little bit different. They were, the rest of the committee kind of didn't want to get involved and they were letting the chair, you know, pick, pick who it was and, and, um, you know, the whole board would have to come back and vote on it, but they kind of took a more hands-off approach on that. But I don't think that that's where our board necessarily is, I think we will all want to hear from them. So.
And is that an open meeting?
Yes.
That's not a, uh?
Yeah, August 23rd is, it's an open meeting.
It's an open meeting, okay.
Are they going to give us a proposal before our meeting?
Yeah, because they're responding to the RFQ right now.
So we'll get to see that?
Yes, yes, yes. That's why I want, I don't want to go into like long presentations from stuff we have. I want to make sure everyone stays on task and has the same agenda. So, um, you know, we probably should put together an agenda that we sent out to the finalists in advance of the meeting on the 23rd. You know, maybe it's two weeks before so that we have that. I mean, and I just think like logistically, if you guys are comfortable with me helping, if I can just set that, um, you know, I, I work, do RFPs for work and, you know, it's obviously a whole different beast, but I understand at least how the process works. And we have a procurement person now who understands how the process works. So, you know, some of those pieces, if you can let me just kind of move forward them, because it will just get so bottlenecked if we stop and have to vote on everything, but then.
Go for it.
Okay, but then we'll all, you know, pick someone and we'll all, you know, we'll figure out which one of us is, is representing or which ones of us and then go from there. And, um, I have the names here, I can certainly pass my notebook around. You know, if anyone wants to write down just some of the ones that I have looked at. But it's Community Paradigm, UMass Collins, um, there's Rick White Gov HR, SRG out of Texas, Municipal Resources, Inc. And you can go to any of their sites and just kind of start poking around.
Can Christina give us that list?
Yeah, yep, I'll have her send that around. All right, great, so, um, I think we're okay to move on to the lieutenant and governor, governor visit for the Forward Act?
So yes, so, so thank you. The lieutenant governor, uh, visited the, the, the community a couple of weeks ago relative to the Forward Act that was promoted by the, by the, by the governor's office and the, and the, and the president administration. In that bill contained a very significant piece of, of legislation for Foxborough. It was about a $4.59 million, uh, funding bill that was included for the Walnut Street intersection and for the sewer connection that was going to be, is being proposed for the, for the Housing Authority project. The governor, lieutenant governor, uh, was particularly impressed by how far along we are in that process and said that, and essentially determined that the project was shovel-ready in many ways, which, which means it is really a prime candidate for funding. So this is one where we really want to continue to push that. This is a, it's a difficult scenario for the governor's position because he currently is a lame duck. He's, uh, they're going to be not, he's not running, they're both not running for reelection in January. So obviously the legislature is taking a bit of a, a cool approach to this because of the fact that they, you know, they may want to probably wait until the next governor takes office. But having said that, there is some very, very good projects contained in that bill that really should go forward regardless of the politics associated with this situation. So we, um, following the meeting, which, which the lieutenant governor, again, was very, uh, very complimentary of Foxborough and the approach that we've taken, um, we actually, I actually drafted a letter that was signed by a number of folks, including the chair of this board, Leah, with, along with Greg Spear and, and the, the planning board chair and, um, and the, the, both of our legislators, um, to, to try and get support to the, to the Speaker of the House and the Senate President to make sure that these, this bill really got some legs. And if it didn't make it through on this, on this legislation, then it would make it through funding through another way, which the lieutenant governor actually suggested as another option because it was so far along. So it really was a, it was a great visit. We, we, we spent a good hour with the lieutenant governor and, um, and it was, and we had a couple under secretaries be there as well to participate in that, in the, in the discussion and had a number of people spoke at that. So it was, it was, it was a good press, uh, press meeting. We got some good press in the, in the newspaper as well, so it was, it was really well done. So we just appreciate the, the opportunity to do that. Uh, just a couple of other things I wanted to make mention while I had it, had here was that tomorrow actually begins a very, uh, long, probably the longest heat wave we're going to have in this community in quite some time. We may see six days of, of plus 90-degree weather, um, in Foxborough and around the state. So, um, and as you see worldwide, they're experiencing a lot of heat in, in other countries, including England. It's probably record-setting heating at this, heat at this point. So some of the things that we're doing is that we're opening the pool, uh, the town pool. We're going to have it open, um, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday after 3:00 PM, free of charge, anybody who wants to come. And on Friday, Saturday and Sunday from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The only reason it's not open earlier in the day is because we do have programs that we run there, so we can't, we can't do it. But we're going to be having, uh, that space available. We're trying, we're trying to set up cooling areas as well in the Council on Aging, as well as in, in Boyd and Library and other places like the, the Police Department, the Public Safety, but that will only be on the weekend because there are events going on throughout the week. We do have a big concert this week at Gillette, um, The Weekend is the name of the band. They're playing Thursday night and it's a, to a pretty large crowd. It's going to be very, very warm that day, as well as the fact that there's a threat of thunder showers in the afternoon. So that could, could get a little dicey up there, but hopefully it'll go, go pretty well. But I just wanted to, to make that aware, aware to the public that we are taking some steps to try and address that. And if, certainly if, if anyone in the public has a problem with, with a medical issue, of course, you instruct to call 911 and, and we'll get people there right away. But if you're having a specific problem that you need some additional help with, feel free to reach out to the, either Council on Aging, our Human Services, uh, our office, or, or Public Safety, we'll be happy to help in any way we can. Another thing I just wanted to make mention of is the fact that during the past week, we had some great news that, that, that Rob Verdon and, and Semrick were acknowledged at the national level by ICMA for winning the, uh, for winning the, um, uh, what is known as the, as the Government Excellence Award for Community Health and Safety. ICMA recognizes government excellence for community, um, for community programs throughout the country on an annual basis. This will be recognized at, at the annual conference in, in Ohio in October, or in September, rather. I'll, I'll be attending that with Rob to, to receive that award. So that's going to be, um, that's a really, really quite an extraordinary measure. That's, that's about the, the, I consider that to be the, the summit of the mountain in terms of getting acknowledged on a, on a national level like that. So congratulations to Rob and, and his team for, for achieving that. The, uh, I've approved the use of town property for some, for a local photographer to, local company to take promotional pictures. It's one of the local companies here had asked if they could use it to maybe include in their advertisement, local pictures on the Common, so help advertise Foxborough in the process. And, um, and also just, we did have the, you make mention, I won't steal your thunder on that, Leah, as far as the ribbon cutting at the, at the local bakery, but, um, that was a, that was a great, great event. And they're doing very, very well, by the way.
Yeah, she was on vacation last two days, I think.
They keep selling out over there, so, it's amazing to me, so, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
And I just wanted to thank Stephanie, I feel like I had, I was away, then we came back with COVID and then someone else might feel like a COVID. So you stepped in and covered a lot, so thank you.
I had, I had great stuff, you know, for the bakery, for the town pool and, and for the lieutenant governor. You know, so funny, um, you know, Bill, Bill said she was, she was, she seemed to be very impressed with, um, you know, what a lot of people, you know, Paige and her crew and Greg Spears had, had put together. And it's funny, I don't, I don't get very nervous around people for some reason. I, and I said to her, I said, I said, I introduced myself and I said, hi, Lieutenant Governor, she said, it's Karen. And, and then, I, I think when I was talking, she was like right next to me and I was like blah, 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 like a little bit. And I, and I said to her afterwards, I said, geez, I said, I don't get very nervous. I said, she's just, you know, something I, you know, um, I, I think she, they've done a great job. So I think sometimes we, you know, some, like, I don't know why, but for some, yeah, for some reason. But no, you handed me over great, great, great things.
You did have some fun ones. So mentioning the Teddy Bear Picnic on July 21st, National Night Out on the Common, August 2nd from 5:00 to 9:00. Um, and then, you know, we've talked about the ribbon cuttings for Sweetness and Honey and the town pool. And I see the constructions coming along on the other new restaurant that was where Sal's and Mal's was. We'd love to have a ribbon cutting at Squadron 21 and just, you know, welcome all these new businesses and, you know, make sure that everyone knows they're around and help support them. So with any, any other selectmen's update before we go into, we have a lot of action items.
Yeah, one quick thing, off of what Bill said about the heat, you know, um, and you talked about Council of Aging, but they always tell you should check on your elderly neighbors because, you know, their body sometimes just doesn't tolerate that type of weather and, and they think they're okay and they become dehydrated. So if you do have an elderly neighbor near you, it would be nice to check on them. And the other thing is, please, I know they say it all the time, but I don't know if anybody saw on social media, but last week over at the Xfinity Center. last week, over at the Xfinity Center, the police rescued three dogs from one of the concerts there. Three dogs, yeah, from Fish.
They love to live in their vans, yeah.
Yeah. So anyhow, three, three dogs were rescued. It was 80 to 85 degrees out, and the dogs were left in vehicles. So I, I know a lot of us are, are pet owners, and please remember, it's, they repeat it and repeat it, and you always hear a story of, you know, somebody finding a dog struggling in a car. So with, you know, off of what Bill said, you know, let's, 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 let's use our smarts on, on some of this stuff. So that's all.
All right, now, we've got 14 action items. And I'm just going to pause before we go to the first one, because you just saw our one-day liquor license for Squadron 21. That was their first one-day liquor license ever. So we have them come in, we make sure they understand things, you know, we, we talk to them. The other ones you see here, like the Rodman Ride for Kids, Anchilidos, they've done this before. You know, Anchilidos even has the machine to read the IDs. So that's the reason why you saw one under an agenda item and the rest under action items. So those tonight under action items, just for everyone's, you know, knowledge, are, are, are return applicants. So I think we're ready to, to, you can just go through these at your speed.
Motion to approve the application for use of public way and, and one-day beer and wine license for September 24th for the Rodman Ride for Kids.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Okay. Motion to approve the public event application for the Sharon Triathlon on August 14th, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Motion to approve a one-day beer and wine license for July 21st, 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM for Saul Taquere's doing business as Anchilidos Taquerea.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve the petition for joint or identical pole locations by the Massachusetts Electric Company in Verizon, New England, Inc., for National Grid to install new joint-owned Guy Stubb Pole 5-84 across from Pole 5 to replace Tree Guy on North High Street.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Okay. Motion to approve the additional events for the 2022 New England Patriots, including preseason, regular season, and potential playoff games at Gillette Stadium to the NPS LLC Annual Entertainment License.
Second.
All right, just under further discussion, we do have commentary here from Police Fire. The only thing I didn't see, and I don't know if Katie's still on, is anything from the State of Advisory. I feel like we usually would get just something saying, we met, we're cool.
As it said, data sheet, they don't meet for, for these. They don't meet for the additional data sheets, just the annual entertainment license with the data sheets they receive for that application.
Okay, so it's by design, then, that we do not have one from them here. But we have not heard any concerns.
Right.
And they typically would be very much fair, because they, they know the process is pretty much...
Also, just to know, Walpole is on board as well. I heard nothing from them.
Pretty well done. Sorry, Katie.
Okay. All right, so we had a motion, the second, that was just for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye. Okay. Motion to approve, approve a use of public way application for the Lowrider Depot Dog Days Comm Eat on August 13th, from 1:00 to 5:00 PM at 10 Annett Road.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve the extended hours request for Wormtown Brewery LLC to begin serving at 10:00 AM on September 25th, October 10th, November 6th, and 20th, and January 1st, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just a question. I'm assuming these are all 1:00 game?
Yes, and...
Sundays, yeah.
I did, you know, we gave them a heads up that, you know, we only have one meeting in August, so just everyone's aware of the, Katie's here, she can, I think we're good. And I did say it was okay to put the January 1st in front of the board, since it was January 1st, rather than waiting till next year, so.
And just a quick question. If it was, I'm trying to think back when we've done these before. If it was a 4 o'clock game, do we, do we ever let them have 10 o'clock? Or we just hit the 10 o'clock for, like, a 1 o'clock game?
1 o'clock game, right, okay. Yep, just, I'm good on it. We had one last year that tried to go earlier. We looked into it, and...
I, I think I remember that, yeah.
Yeah, moved it back to 10, so. All right, so all those in favor?
Aye. Motion to authorize one police officer to be present for FY23 elections, September 6th for state primary, November 8th for state election, and May 1st, 2023 for annual town election, with additional offices available to the town clerk upon request to the police chief.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Motion to appoint town election workers for a one-year term, September 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? Thank you to our election workers. All those in favor?
Aye. Motion to appoint Nancy Bach to the Council on Aging and Human Services Advisory Board for a term to end May 31st, 2023.
Second.
And someone had resigned here, and they're filling the rest of that term. That's why this one's off-cycle. So, all those in favor?
Motion to accept a donation of $500 from the Brooks family in honor of Ralph and Amelia Brooks to the Council on Aging Gift Fund.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to accept a $250, a donation of $250 from Lisa Jolikur on behalf of the J.C.'s for Easton Children's museum passes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve the capital improvement planning committee request as proposed from the June 7th CIP meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
And approval of the May 24th, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor? Good job getting through those. I think that might be a record for motions.
That was good, yeah.
It's been a while since we've had that many.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a lot, so.
You took over the little ones.
That's right.
So just a motion to adjourn.
Just one thing before we do, it was the, one thing I did notice, and Katie, thank you for reminding me, that I did approve the use of the comma for National Night Out, which is on August 2nd.
Yes, sorry, I moved that from yours down to ours.
Okay, so.
So, that's going to, that's going to go on. I think there, the G.C.'s are looking for, for more vendors. I saw a post on that, so.
So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
All right, so our only August meeting for normal business will be August 16th, and then our meeting on the 23rd will just be for the purposes of the, the RFQ from the search advisor. So one, one real meeting in August. And will the other one on the